Board meeting for the first meeting of the new year of 2020, January 7, 2020. So pursuant to this board's authority under 940 CMR 29.10 per in eight close per in, Board Member Nancy Heller will be participating remotely via telephone due to personal illness. There is a quorum physically present and all votes taken will be recorded by roll call. So with that said, let's begin with any announcements, updates? I have one that I'd like to read first, and this was originally going to be read or be a statement by Nancy Heller. She asked me to read it because she's having difficulty with her eyes, I believe. We are excited to announce that following a competitive bid to extend the town's Brookline Green electricity program, the town has selected Direct Energy Services as its new retail electricity supplier for the next 35 months, beginning January 2020. Direct Energy is the supplier to numerous community electricity aggregation programs in the Commonwealth. Customers that were previously in the Brookline Green program will this week or next be getting notification from the town in the mail and will also see on their January Eversource bill a statement that we have changed suppliers to Direct Energy. This change reflects the town's selection of Direct Energy in this new phase of the program. You are not required to take any action and your current Brookline Green product election will not change unless you elect to do so, speaking to customers of Eversource. We know that a lot of residents get calls from a variety of energy suppliers, so we want people to know that the letter in the mail from the town about Direct Energy is official, and we have also posted that same letter on the town webpage, www.brooklinegreen.com. So are there any other announcements or updates?
Sure.
Mr. Fernandez?
Just want to let folks know that the League Women Voters regularly hosts a second Friday Coffee and Conversation gathering at the Anatolia Buffet and Kebab House, so this Friday is that next Coffee and Conversation. It'll feature Brookline Town Clerk Pat Ward. He'll be speaking about the upcoming Brookline Annual Street List, or might be known as the Town Census, and its impact on voting rights. It is mailed directly to residences in January to record an accurate list of residences, sorry, residents, an important step in voter verification. So if you want to hear Pat Ward, our great town clerk, come talk about that. This Friday at Anatolia Buffet, it happens at 9:30 a.m. I'm hoping to be able to be there and check it out.
Okay, any other?
I have a couple of updates. One, the Driscoll School Building Committee will be meeting this Thursday, 7:30 a.m., one floor below us in the school committee conference room. We're resuming now that the override passed in December. I also want to mention a film at the Coolidge Corner Theater on Thursday night. The film is Facing Civil Rights. You can buy tickets, I think they're under $10.
$7.50.
$7.50. I believe the screening starts at 7:00 p.m. And then lastly, I want to update the board and those tuning in. We passed a warrant article at the last town meeting to involve in the select board to write a transfer tax letter to the state delegation. And I've been working on that over the past couple of weeks. It's now with the attorneys and town council's office. So that will be on our agenda for next Tuesday, and then we will be sending it to the state delegation requesting the 2% transfer tax for affordable housing.
So I'd like to add to Ms. Hamilton's announcement regarding Facing Civil Rights. The proceeds of these ticket sales will go towards the food bank, so that's another reason to attend that performance, in addition to the fact that it's a very, very interesting and very important program.
And the Newberry Committee is meeting in this room tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Tomorrow evening at 7:00. Okay, any public comments? Yes, Mr. Carroll.
Hi, I'm Frank Carroll. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct Two. I want a, Select Board Member Hamilton indicated that she's working on a letter that's going to be written to the legislature following through on the town meeting's positive vote on Article Nine concerned with affordable housing and proposing a property transfer tax. I want to just kind of offer some comments about the way that letter might be crafted. You know, I'm, it's unusual for me to make use of this public comment opportunity. I don't believe I've ever done it before. I'm here because I, both I recognize the importance of expanded affordable housing and clearly a need for more funding for it, but I'm also extremely uneasy about the way this has come forward because it's a really uncharacteristic way for Brookline to proceed. This is an instance in which an extremely ambitious, important proposal was brought to town meeting and acted upon really without thorough vetting. And so I'm concerned about the way in which the Select Board will make the request to the legislature. For one thing, it's important that the letter say pretty clearly and directly what the town is actually asking for. It's entirely possible that the Select Board will give us what we want, and so we should be clear about what we want. And also, it's important to think about, to ask for authorization for an initiative that Brookline voters are actually likely to approve. We've had the experience twice in this decade that town meeting has brought new tax initiative proposals with the Community Preservation Act to the voters, and twice the voters have turned them down. So enthusiasm on the part of town meeting is not necessarily predictive of what the voters are going to do. And I should say, when these requests are turned down by the voters, it's not easy to go back to them with another proposal. So it really needs to be approached very thoughtfully. And I also think that the way in which the request should be made should take into account the work of the Land Bank Study Committee, which is something which the town meeting authorized, and the town is not likely to go back to the legislature a year or two from now and say, well, we now have a recommendation from the Land Bank Study Committee for another somewhat parallel initiative that comes out of the work of that committee. And we didn't have a sort of direction from town meeting to kind of scrap the work of the Land Bank Study Committee. So I just kind of offered my opinion that it's best if somehow the language is crafted that, yes, ask the legislature to authorize a tax for affordable housing, but also ask for money that addresses other important Brookline capital needs, like needs for open space and educational facilities. I, you know, should also suggest to you that the letter be written in a way that provides the town with some room to think through some exemptions for, in the case of transactions in which there is no significant gain in property value. There are instances, well, one of the people who, one group of people that will be adversely affected by property transfer tax are people who turn over properties relatively rapidly. And in some instances, people turn over properties, you know, not because they really want to, but because their circumstances make it necessary for them to do that. I'm particularly sensitive to older people who want to remain in the community but think it's better for them to move from one place to another so they may purchase one place, move to another, and then unexpectedly experience some health problems, forced to sell, move on to something else. And the idea that those people would be asked to pay this kind of tax again just because of the value of the property, having nothing, with no gain in value. So I, you know, I think there are kind of some kind of circumstances like that, that the town needs some wiggle room to deal with it. And, you know, because this proposal was not vetted in the way in which Brookline proposals are usually vetted, I really think there's a need for the Select Board to craft the letter in a way that gives it an opportunity to make some modifications down the line before this is brought to the voter. Thank you for the opportunity to express myself on this important matter. And I wish you very well in figuring out this very challenging task.
So Ms. Hamilton, who's working on this, you know, I'm sure has taken down, you know, those comments, and to an extent possible, will take them into consideration as we present actual legislation to the legislature.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments? Or I'm sorry, any other, yeah, public comments? Okay, next, approval of Select Board minutes. I'd like to approve October 1 and October 7, 2019 separately from September 24. Any corrections to those minutes? No? Okay, I'd like to first approve September 24, 2019, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Hello?
Yes.
Oh.
Approval of, aye, okay, September 24. Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair abstains because I was not at this meeting. Okay, October 1, 2019, and October 7, 2019. I had a small edit that I conveyed to, you know, to, who did I convey? Oh, Kate.
Can we divide these two minutes?
Sure.
Since I was not present at one of the meetings.
Okay, okay, let's start with October 1. I had no edits. Anyone else have edits to those? Okay, Mr. Franco?
Abstain.
And Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Heller?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Sorry, but got out of order. Okay, October 7, 2019, any additional edits? No? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay. Question of accepting a gift in the amount of $500 from the Korean Church of Boston at 32 Harvard Street, Brookline, to support the youth police initiative program. Chief Lipson?
Good evening, Andrew Lipson, Chief of Police. We've received the donation, again this year, of $500 from the Korean Church of Boston. The donation, if approved by the board, will be used to help fund our youth and police initiative, which is a program designed to improve the relationship between law enforcement and youths who may be at risk.
Good. Any questions?
Just tell folks what some of the activities of the program are?
Sure. So it takes place over a number of weeks. A group of youths get together with police officers and they do various activities. They do team building exercises, speak in group discussions about problems they may be having, go on some fun trips. I think they went to Fenway Park. It culminates in a nice dinner where everybody sits down and breaks bread together. It's been a really great program.
Can folks apply just by reaching out to the department?
Yes.
And we appreciate the Korean Church's support of this program over the years and...
Long-standing support.
Right.
Yes.
So any other questions? I'm of approval of the gift. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question of authorizing the Chair to execute a request for release of funds and certification on behalf of the Brookline Housing Authority in advance of its rental assistance demonstration financing plan submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the proposed Teresa Morris Apartments project, which is 90 Longwood. Mr. Viola?
Good evening, Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. As the board knows, the housing authority is undertaking a long-term preservation initiative where they're doing significant renovations to a number of their developments townwide. They're utilizing rental assistance demonstration funds that are administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. But prior to submitting its RAD financing plan, HUD requires that they undertake what's known as an environmental review. It's a requirement for using federal funds that we go through this process, and essentially it's a review of the project's impact on the surrounding environment. The town happens to be HUD's designated responsible entity for this process, and we were asked to take the lead on behalf of the housing authority to help them shepherd them through this process. We worked with the housing authority's consultant to do what's called an environmental assessment, which we completed and which requires a notice period that allows for public comment. We made the record available in December, and as of tonight, we have not received any comments. We're asking the board to authorize the execution of the request for release of funds. It is a way to affirm to HUD that we've actually gone through this procedural process and that after your vote tonight, this sets in motion the review by HUD, who will review the same documentation and eventually will allow the housing authority to submit their financing plan application. I should note, next week, Virginia Billick and/or Roger Blood will be here to provide more information and provide the HAB's recommendation about funding.
All right, good, good. I guess at that time, we'll ask them to sort of describe the RAD program and the financing structure that this involves. It's a $49 million project?
Approximately $40 million, yes.
And our contribution is going to be a fraction of that?
A fraction, minimal.
One point something million, so.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm of approval of the execution of the request for release of funds. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question of approving a temporary all kinds beverages non-sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum to be held on February, on Friday, January 10, 2024, holiday party from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 15 Newton Street. I understand the police approval was pending when we got our package. Is that, has that been approved?
I haven't seen that.
I think you should approve it subject to their approval.
Okay, wait, what is this?
That's the next.
There's a late-breaking one that they, also Lars Anderson, that it was an event for this Saturday, so we included it on our calendar tonight.
So I'm of approval, subject to police approval, of the temporary all kinds beverages non-sales license for January 10. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And next is a new addition to our agenda, temporary all kinds beverages non-sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum to be held on Saturday, January 11, 2024, a birthday party, 5:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 15 Newton Street. And the police have approved this one. We just got this. Do people need time to look through it, make sure there are no questions they have? Seems fairly straightforward, tips and crowd management in order.
And insurance as well.
Right, and insurance.
Given it's town property.
So any questions? I'm of approval of the temporary all kinds beverages non-sales license to Lars Anderson on January 11, or party on January 11. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay. Okay, 20th anniversary of China Exchange Program with the city of Xin'an. I believe that's how you pronounce it. At least that was how it was pronounced at the school committee meeting earlier today. So do we have the proclamation? Okay, good. I usually read these proclamations, they're not that long. Whereas the Brookline Xin'an China Exchange Program...
Excuse me, Bernard?
Yes.
Bernard?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just like a comment first before you...
Yes, please. I apologize if you mention that. Yep.
Okay, as some of you know, I've been involved with this program for the 20 years that it's been in existence. I was on the school committee in 1999 when we established it, well, due to the work of Claire Jackson, who was then the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. It's been a terrific, terrific program. I've been privileged to be a host parent in 2000 to a young woman who ended up coming back after she went back to Xi'an, to the Gao Xun School and finished high school, and then she went to college in China, and she came back to do her graduate work at BU in organic chemistry, and she lived with me for 11 years before she got married. Boo hoo. But the program has been fantastic. Every year, I've taken the kids to the Berkshires, one weekend in January. We did it last weekend, it was fantastic. They go skiing, they go to the Norman Rockwell Museum, so they really get a good taste of American culture at the Norman Rockwell Museum. They go bowling. It's really been a wonderful, wonderful program. I can't say enough about it. We take, Gao Xun School sends eight kids, eight students, to Brookline High in the fall semester, and we send eight of our students, Brookline students, to the Gao Xun School for the spring semester with a teacher in both cases. We get a teacher from China in the fall, and we send a teacher from Brookline High School in the spring. So it's really been a wonderful, wonderful experience. I know the host, other host families will join me in agreeing with that, and I'm thrilled that we're going to, we've gone through 20 years, and I hope for 20 more.
Thank you. If no one objects, I'd like to propose that we, in the first paragraph, which I will read, use the official names of the two countries. So the United States should be United States of America, and China should be the People's Republic of China.
Sure.
Okay. Netpicking, I'm sure, it's true, but I think that's important. Whereas the Brookline Xi'an China Exchange Program seeks to foster personal connections and a mutual climate of cultural understanding between the people of the United States of America and the People's Republic of China, and whereas the town of Brookline seeks to celebrate and commemorate the 20th anniversary of the Brookline Xi'an China Exchange Program and acknowledge the friendship between the people of Brookline, Massachusetts, and the people of Xi'an, China, and whereas Brookline High School has successfully participated in the student and teacher exchange program with a Gao Xun number-one school in Xi'an, China, every year for the past 20 years. I apologize if I did not pronounce the school name correctly. And whereas residents of Brookline, including students, parents, teachers, and other community members, have formed deep and lasting friendships with their Chinese counterparts as a result of the Brookline Xi'an China Exchange Program. And whereas Brookline Xi'an China Exchange Program has fostered an increased cultural awareness between the people of the United States and China, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Select Board of the town of Brookline, Massachusetts, in affirmation and support of this extraordinary exchange program, do hereby extend our congratulations to the Brookline Xi'an China Exchange Program on its 20th anniversary and offer our sincere welcome to the visiting delegation from Xi'an, China, in celebration of this remarkable occasion. To be signed by the Select Board and Town Administrator. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, authorization to hire police department personnel. Question of authorization to fill the following vacancies in the police department, part-time crisis intervention team, administrative assistant, police lieutenant, and police sergeant. Chief Lipson?
Andrew Lipson, Chief of Police. I'm here tonight before the board to request authorization to fill several positions in the police department. The first is a crisis intervention administrative assistant. It's a grant-funded, part-time position that assists our crisis intervention team with data entry, preparation of training, and monitoring and tracking their activities. The two other positions are Lieutenant Phil Harrington, retired after 35 years in the police department. Today was his actual last day of work, although he's on schedule for a little bit, and as a result, will have a vacancy in the rank of lieutenant. And I'm requesting authorization to fill promotions in the rank of lieutenant and then a corresponding opening in the rank of sergeant.
Well, Phil Harrington is quite a fixture around town in a very positive way, and, you know, the town, I think, is going to miss him.
He was actually my dare officer way back when.
And he was successful, as evidenced by Mr. Franco's. So any other questions? So the CIT Administrative Assistant is an important position. Could you give the board and the audience a sense of, you know, what role that person will play in our CIT training?
Sure. So it's a grant-funded position. They work closely. It's a civilian position, part-time. The administrative assistant works closely with our civilian social worker within the police department and also with our crisis intervention supervisors. And their role is we provide for Norfolk County Police Departments every year six trainings, at least, in crisis intervention training for police officers, and they assist with preparing for these classes. They also assist in tracking our interactions with people in need of mental health services through the department and through other social service partners.
The social service aspect of your work is incredibly important in terms of making sure that the law enforcement aspect is not overused.
Yeah, well, they go hand in hand. They really do.
And, you know, the fact that we have a social worker, which, you know, plays a very important role, I think is something that people should know and appreciate for our police department. Any other questions? Do you have a question?
Sure. I just noticed on the qualifications, it mentions that the person must have a car and a valid driver's license. What's the reason for that particular requirement?
The trainings are all over Norfolk County, so they have to travel, and there's also various meetings around the state that they have to go to.
And we don't have vehicles in the town available to folks that may not have a car?
We might.
But they still need a valid driver's license?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, the license makes sense to me. It's just the owning a car necessarily in a time where we have less and less folks owning cars, myself included. owning cars, myself included.
Yeah, I can check. I mean, some of these requirements might be part of the grant requirements. We certainly, as a department, can facilitate travel of people to where they need to be. But I'm guessing that that came from the grant requirement, maybe not us.
And there may be a cost to providing a town car that would exceed the cost of the mileage that you offer, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I thought we were voting them all together. Okay, so that's for the part-time crisis intervention team administrative assistant. Do we need to vote the police lieutenant and police sergeant separately or do you want, can you take those together?
No, you can take them together.
Okay, so on favor of authorization to fill the vacancies in the police lieutenant position and police sergeant position, state, say aye, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, authorization to hire DPW. Question of authorization to fill the following vacancies in the Department of Public Works. Two motor equipment operators, horticultural supervisor, pipe layer laborer, gardener laborer. Commissioner Papa Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have before you five vacancies within the department. At the present time, we currently have nine actual vacancies, of which four have been previously authorized and are in process of filling. These are in various divisions. I'll go through them quickly. Gardener laborer in the parks and open space division. That is an entry level position that was made vacant through the resignation of a prior employee. A horticultur supervisor in the parks and open space division. This is a higher level supervisory position that oversees all of the management, maintenance and care of our horticultural areas, executes comprehensive plans for horticulture maintenance and management, and monitors the safety and performance of the work who is assigned to them and also provides field training. This position has become vacant through the resignation of this prior incumbent, Jackie Jackson, who has taken on a position, a better position at another company, much to our loss. She was a terrific worker. We have a motor equipment operator in the highway and sanitation division. This is a new full-time position that was created through the actions of town meeting in the fall. This position is for water control around the marijuana dispensaries and will be funded at least through the, at least for now, through the NEDA funds, revenue funds. A second motor equipment operator within the water and sewer division, result of the resignation of the incumbent. And finally, a pipe layer position in water and sewer. This is also an entry level position that has been vacated through the promotion of the prior incumbent to a higher rated position within the division. So I ask your authorization to fill those five positions.
Okay, any questions?
Aye. It's only four listed on the...
No, two, two motor vehicle operators.
Oh, I see.
Should be an S after operator. Okay, I have a question. You know, like all departments in the paperwork for authorization, you say that you work with HR to post openings at Pro Diversity, Pro Diversity Network and Zip Recruiter. Because my question is, from your standpoint, is that an effective way for obtaining a diverse pool of applicants that you can consider? I mean, from your standpoint, not, you know...
We don't get involved too much at the beginning stages through the advertisement. I have to rely on the expertise of, of the professionals and human resources. I have to assume that once we get a pool of candidates, that they've been thoroughly, that's, that's as a result of a thorough search, that's been far and wide. I think in some of our positions, we see, we see that to be the case and others, maybe not so much. I'm not sure just what avenues are available to, to, to change that, so...
Yeah. Any other questions? And this is something that, you know, I've always thought was important and I guess I'm gonna be talking to Ann Braga regarding, you know, her side and her understanding or her experience on the HR side of this.
We, we do have these discussions with Ann and her staff and it's to our advantage to get the largest pool of applicants that we can possibly get. And I like to believe that that's actually the case, so...
So, I move authorization to fill the vacancies in the Department of Public Works. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Authorization to hire counsel on aging. Question of authorization to fill the following vacancy in the Brookline Counsel on Aging, a van driver. Yes?
Ruth Ann Dobek, Director of the Brookline Counsel on Aging and Senior Center. The van driver position allows us to run our van vehicle, bringing older adults to the senior center and then back home again. This is one of our projects that is totally funded by the nonprofit and does not cost the town any money for this position. We have had a very wonderful van driver in Nick Alden for the last four years. And Nick has moved on to be a medical translator, so for a better job. This has been the breeding ground. We're proud to say our last van driver went on to get his master's in social work and is now running a day health program for Rogerson. So we are training our van drivers to be excellent service to older adults and hopefully we will keep somebody for the next position. But we are seeking authorization for that position this evening.
Well, it's, it's too bad that we lose great people, but it's also a credit to your leadership and the agency that people use this position as stepping stone to advance their careers, so... Anyway, the...
We're proud to be trainers.
Right. So, any other questions? So I move approval of authorization to fill the vacancy in the, for the Brookline Counsel on Aging for a van driver. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Is that in our, at our desk?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, next. So next, Census Complete Count Committee. Question of adopting a charge for the Census Complete Count Committee?
I think you skip forward and commission...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We're gonna defer the appointment to the Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Committee, Commission for a later meeting. Okay. Sorry. Okay, question of adopting a charge for the Census Complete Count Committee? I'm gonna read the charge. I know it's long, but that's life. Because I think it explains the purpose of this committee and the importance of appointing a committee as soon as possible. "On Census Day, April 1, 2020, residents around the country will receive their 2020 U.S. Census forms and be invited to respond either online, by phone or through the mail. This is the first year that residents will be able to respond to the U.S. Census online. Ensuring that every United States resident is counted during the 2020 Census is vital to the health and operation of our constitutional form of government and of vital importance to the town of Brookline. The select board thereby, therefore hereby charges a select board Brookline Census Complete Count Committee as follows. The committee's purpose shall be to work with the relevant town departments, the Secretary of the Commonwealth, the U.S. Census Bureau and individuals and entities in the town of Brookline to support the goals and ideals of the United States Census as provided in the federal constitution, disseminate 2020 census information and ensure that everyone in Brookline is counted during the 2020 Census. The committee shall develop strategies to inform the residents of the town of Brookline of the importance of the census, including, without limitation, that federal and state funding is allocated to communities and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance based in part on census data. That census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and is necessary for an accurate redistricting of state legislative seats and Brookline precinct voting districts, which will ensure fair representation. That information from the 2020 Census and the related American Community Survey are vital tools for economic development and facilitates employment, business and housing opportunities. That information and that information from the 2020 Census will be essential information that will inform local policy decisions. The committee shall develop strategies and outreach plans to identify and work to include in the census those communities that have historically been undercounted, including, without limitation, senior residents, young children, residents in transition to different housing types, people of color, non-native speakers, persons experiencing homelessness, transient students, immigrant and refugee communities, persons fearful of interaction with government officials, recently arriving residents, formerly incarcerated individuals and individuals with mental illness. These are among the groups that we want to target to make sure that they are not missed in the count. The committee shall develop strategies to highlight the ways in which census information is confidential and protected by law in order to assure residents that they will not be subject to personal or family risk by participating in the census. Of course, we all understand the importance of this in light of the way that our federal government sometimes uses information gathered against people. Census, you know, from what we understand, is a tightly protected body of information that is not available for purposes such as the, what was that act? The, what was? Pardon me? Well, yeah, ICE, among other things, but I was thinking of the Patriot Act. It's been tested and it's locked tight. The committee shall develop strategies and organize events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 Census and increase participation, including providing census advocates to speak to community organizations. The committee shall be comprised of select board members Nancy Heller and Raul Fernandez, who shall co-chair the committee, the town clerk, a designee of the school committee, a designee of the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations, representatives of the community, such as representatives of social service, higher education, religious and community organizations, and such additional residents of the town as determined by the co-chairs to be necessary to assist in the performance of the duties of the committee. Any questions or comments?
I'm excited to get working on this. I wanted to offer just a couple more comments about this and how very important the census is. In addition to sort of redrawing, redistricting and apportioning congressional seats, nationally there's $675 billion that goes to states and to communities like ours. That impacts housing, education, transportation, employment, healthcare and also public policy. Residents can use this to build community, local government can use this to make some public policy decisions and even business can use this data to decide where to build factories, offices and other stores, which can create jobs as well. I also want to point out that, you know, Brookline has unusually high participation every, every decade and we hope that that will continue in terms of responding to the census. I will say that this is the first time that, that online, completing the census online will be a first option for folks even before receiving a letter and even before someone comes and knocks on your door. And so, so that is a, that is a new way that the federal government is collecting information and it'll be upon us as a, as a, certainly as a committee, as a select board, as a government, to make sure that folks are aware of some of the changes that have happened to the census and also the very important privacy issues that the chair outlined as well.
Any other questions?
A comment with numbers three and six in mind. I defer to the co-chairs about whether representation from the Housing Authority should be on the committee, but certainly I would hope that there would be a partnership and communication there to try and get residents of Housing Authority property, both those who hold vouchers but also live in Housing Authority properties, counted and franchised and involved in this process as well.
Absolutely, yes. Okay. Any other questions? I move approval of the charge to the Brookline Census Complete Count Committee. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, next. Inclusive engagement best practices. Miss Starr is going to present a document that will be circulated to various boards and commissions to give ideas as to best practices to ensure inclusive, or broad participation and inclusive participation in these vital town bodies.
Thank you Bernard. Caitlin Starr, the Assistant Director in the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations. So some of you may know, beginning in the spring of 2018, the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations developed and distributed two assessments. One to collect demographic data from current members of Brookline's decision-making groups, commissions, committees, boards and town meeting members. And the second to samples of Brookline residents in an effort to gather information on perceived barriers to civic engagement within Brookline. The data from the review of the then-current membership of governing groups illustrated a disconnect between the demographics of Brookline's residents and those involved in town government and decision-making groups. The results from the survey demonstrated the need to reach more diverse groups of residents, encourage participation in town government from communities that are underrepresented and engage younger residents in town government and decision-making groups. Several key barriers from the distribution of the civic engagement barrier assessment were times and locations of meetings, parking and transportation, childcare and notifications and where to find information on meetings. Based on the findings from these surveys and personal narratives from working on this initiative with community members, the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations began developing and implementing several strategies to begin to cultivate a community of civically engaged residents. I'm here to present one of those strategies tonight. Our office began collaborating with Inclusive Brookline, a community group that was formed out of Article 29 of the May 2019 town meeting, to increase diversity among town meeting members as well as increase diverse participation in town committees, commissions and boards. It was at Inclusive Brookline, it was at an Inclusive Brookline meeting that one group discussed several possible community engagement practices that could make commission, committee and board meetings more accessible and inclusive to a broader community of Brookline residents. With their input and support, our office drafted and finalized a best practices for inclusion to share with all the commission, committee and board chairs as a first step to a larger and more comprehensive community engagement initiative. These best practices will be posted on the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations website, as well as shared with all commission, committee and board chairs, as well as with town meeting members. So I'm just here to present this tonight. There is no action needed, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And this is, is parallel to the difference from the Warren article at this, last year's town meeting on civic engagement, so...
Yes, correct. It is, this is something that was developed before that Warren article and this is just a list of recommendations to get decision-making groups thinking about how they can be more inclusive and accessible.
Any other questions? No?
All right.
Great, great idea.
Well, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, payment in lieu of tax agreement with Brigham and Women's Hospital. Mr. Klechner will, you know, lead us through this, this part of the agenda. So it's a question of approving a pilot agreement between the town of Brookline and the Brigham and Women's Hospital, Inc., for 8:30 and 8:50. the Brigham and Women's Hospital, Inc., for 830 and 850 Boylston Street. Mr. Kleckner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mel Kleckner, Town Administrator, I've moved over to the podium because I think this is a very momentous agreement this evening, and I wanted to give it its due. I wanted to also acknowledge some visitors with us this evening. Robin Berry from Partners Healthcare, I know you've changed your name, but I'll think of it someday, and Steve Dempsey from Brigham and Women's Hospital are here. And I also want to acknowledge Gina Franconi, our Finance Director, and Rashid Belashin, our Acting Chief Assessor. Missing tonight was really the person behind, who did all the work, was Gary McCabe, our recently retired Chief Assessor, and I just want to acknowledge again Gary's great work for the town. I invited him here tonight. He politely declined. Don't know why. But I did want to say that this is a pilot agreement is an acronym for a payment in lieu of tax agreement in Massachusetts. Charitable institutions, education and charitable institutions are exempt from property taxation. And so in recognition of that, and of course in Brookline, we're located near some major educational and hospital institutions, and so it's not unusual for us to deal with the tax-exempt institutions. And so when Brigham and Women's acquired the property at 850 Boylston, of course, we were greeting them to the town and also talking about our pilot program. And I think an important thing for you to understand and the public to understand is we do have a pilot policy, and that's very important for institutions like Brigham and Women's or others to know that the town has a consistent approach at, a consistent and predictable approach at payment in lieu of taxes. And we hear that time and time again, that there's more of a willingness to engage with the town when there is such a longstanding and consistent policy across all of the institutions. So this is, will become our second largest payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Our largest is with Boston University. This particular agreement will pay the town $400,000 in its first year, and it will increase at the rate of 2.5% going forward. We're really, I want to say again, this is a voluntary agreement. Even though we have a policy and we have many payment in lieu of tax agreements, it is voluntary on behalf of that institution, and so they need to be compelled to do that. And in this case, there really was no other leverage the town had. You know, sometimes we are able to negotiate these during a zoning or some other land use, but in this case, you know, Brigham and Women's stepped up and was willing to negotiate with the town. So I'm really pleased with that. We have the agreement here for you, for your approval, but I did want to give Robin or Steve an opportunity to just, to address the board very briefly, if you wouldn't mind.
Hi, Robin Berry, again, Director of Real Estate for Partners, and I just want to echo your comments. Not only is it easier for you in administering programs, it's much easier for us as well to know what to expect when we're coming in, and that is definitely not the case in a lot of municipalities that we enter into. But it was really a pleasure to work with Mr. Kleckner and his team. I have to say that, you know, we didn't come in at the amount that we ended up at, but they pushed. And, you know, we, we think it's very important that we are a partner in communities that we come into, and we look forward to being one here as well. And I have to say, I was talking to Steve earlier today, we've actually been in the building.
Please, speak in the mic, please.
We've been in the building.
We have a vast TV audience.
We've been in the building over 30 years, so we're clearly not going anywhere, and we really care about being part of the community, so it's our pleasure. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah? Thank you, members of the board, for having us in tonight. It's my pleasure, and yes, we've been, we've been in both of those buildings for a long, long time, and this, by acquiring the property, we're pleased to signal that we're interested in providing patient care to members of this community and the surrounding communities for a good long time. And we're, we love it here, and the town's been great, the patients are great, and so thank you for acknowledging us. It's our pleasure, and we're glad to be able to get it done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any, any questions from the board?
I'll just take the opportunity to thank Mr. Kleckner and Brigham and Women's team. I know, you know, you probably didn't want to part with more money, but it goes to a good cause most of the time.
All the time.
All the time. So thank you for making sure that this got done.
A nearby fire station, for example.
Yeah.
I'll just say, I appreciate the partnership, the longstanding partnership. A strong Brigham and Women's and Partners and a strong Brookline, it's a winning combination, and strength on one side of the equation without strength on the other just doesn't add up to a cohesive whole. And I hope that this is one instance of partnership. Money is nice, but collaboration on projects and services is also appreciated. Brookline is a diverse community, as we're, we all know, and there are corners of need here in Brookline, so hopefully we can build on this strong foundation and go forward with partnership in mind.
Any other comments? Okay, I move approval of the pilot agreement between the town of Brookline and the Brigham and Women's Hospital for 830 through 850 Boylston Street. I think, well, the pilot agreement covers all three properties, even though one's not tax-exempt. Okay. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Noise bylaw waiver. This is a public hearing. Ah, we're five minutes early, so I guess close enough, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Masek, come on up.
If you wanted to take something up, you could do that if necessary.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we take up our annual town meeting election schedule And we'll bring you back up at the correct time. Ms. Starr?
Good evening. You should have in front of you a proposed schedule for a town meeting. We did have to make a couple of revisions to the actual town meeting dates. We have a holiday that we need to navigate around, so the schedule that you have in front of you, the town meeting dates, would be in May 19th. We are still negotiating with the high school on the scheduling of the second, third, and fourth nights, but tentatively, we are scheduling the second, third, and fourth night of town meeting to be May 21st, 26th, and June 2nd.
Not May 27?
No, that was the holiday that needed to shift.
That's the one that's changing, okay.
Yes.
What holiday is that, Memorial Day?
No, it's a Jewish holiday that I was not aware of, and thanks to Michael Bernstein, who pointed that out when Sandy sent out his notice.
Okay, so we're anticipating another long town meeting.
Well, we're reserving four nights, which is not, is not unusual, but going six nights very much so is.
Yeah.
I think the other important date here is May 5th, which is the date we're setting for the town election.
Okay, any other questions? So.
In the opening and closing of the warrant as well.
Right, which is February 6th and closing March 5th.
Yes.
Very important dates.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, unless there are any other questions, I'd like to move approval of the annual town meeting election schedule as amended.
Can you just read those town meeting dates again for folks that are watching very interested?
Yep. Well, I think we are required to send out postcards to every town meeting member. We're also going to be posting notice in the paper. We're also going to be updating the website, emailing the listservs. Tentatively, well, for certain, the first date of town meeting will be May 19th. The tentative dates for the rest of the schedule are May 21st, 26th, and June 2nd.
And June 2nd is a Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of setting the dates for the 2020 annual town election and annual town meeting, say aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we still have three minutes, but let's bring them up anyway.
Says approximately.
Okay, so, pardon me?
Says approximately.
Yeah. So, public hearing, question of approving the noise bylaw waiver request from Skanska USA Building, Inc., for Brookline High School expansion, work at 111 Cypress Street and MBTA Brookline Hill Station, work at Tappan Street from January 22nd, 2020 to May 22nd, 2020. Weekdays, 7:01 PM to 6:59 AM, and weekends, 6:01 PM to 8:29 AM. Mr. Masek?
Ray Masek, Building Department, I'd just like to make a few opening statements, how this has been working in the past. Weekly, we post to the school website our three-week look ahead. We have the bulletin board up. The Super gives me Monday updates, and usually it's very favorable. We haven't had any complaints since the first day where I was up at 5:30 and the police indicated we were having activity at 111 Cypress. Since then, we've had no complaints. We do emails, flyers, and I have, once this gets approved for the next, next four months, I will forward that to the police department so they'll know that this notification. I'm now going to turn it over to the Skanska team so they can fully explain what we'll be doing over the next four months, but right now, we are basically doing foundations and site work and working at the T station.
And just so it's clear, this is part of a much longer project of which this is just one piece that we've asked you to separate, come to the board to, so we can approve them piece by piece as opposed to just everything?
This is a much larger project. This is allowing us to stay ahead of our schedule. Thank you.
Great, appreciate it. Rob Mulligan, Senior Project Manager with Skanska USA Building.
White View, Project Manager, Skanska Building.
Robert Conick, Senior Project Manager, Skanska Building.
So what we've put together in front of you is schedules of weekend work associated with working above and around the MBTA catenary system. The building, as most of you know, or may or may not know, goes over the tracks, and we'll be putting in a series of foundations for the future structure, as well as some catenary structures and wire relocation to lower the wires for the future building. As Ray pointed out, it's a projection for all of the next four months, and it takes us through our first concrete slab level that'll be over the tracks for the future building.
Good. Any questions? Ms. Heller, would you like to add to this?
I would just like to thank the team because they've done a terrific job of making sure that the neighbors are notified. It's a very robust notification system, including emails and poster boards and the like, and that shows in the fact people understand that the MBTA requires that in order for us to, you know, work beyond the very, very limited hours, we must have these waivers. And the neighborhood understands that, they seem to be responsive, and just very appreciative of the work of the team, and I would urge you to support this request.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
No, just, you know, I really appreciate this format, that in the calendar especially, it gives us and also residents an idea of what to expect, and I see things sort of wrapping up potentially by later in May, which maybe provides the perfect opportunity for us to host some kind of barbecue for the residents in the area, to thank them for their patience as this important project has been taking place, so thank you for your work on this.
So what's wrapping up in May is the foundation for the superstructure of the building.
We'll have the.
Foundation over the tracks.
The intent is to have the foundations and the first level of concrete slab structure over the tracks. We'll then be going up with the rest of the structure and the rest of the slabs and the facade will be starting, but that'll be the initial overbuild, as we call it.
So as you're going up different levels, does, does the MBTA have to cease operations while you're doing that, or is, that's something that can be done while the trains are running? Oh, that look on your face suggests that this is a.
That's something we're still coordinating with the T. We meet monthly, we meet weekly with the MBTA. They look at our operations, they have an onsite, what I call a clerk of the works, and I think they're going to review our operations and they'll tell us whether we can have the train still run as we're building steel above the overbuild.
And if we can't, that just extends the time for the project. Would it extend it significantly, or I assume it's.
Well, we'll come before you again with a noise bylaw waiver. We'll see how that goes. We're hopeful, once we have the overbuild, the netting up, all the safe mechanisms to make the project, the project site safe, they'll then tell us whether they think we can continue to do the overbuild, I mean, the structural steel while the trains are still running.
Okay, so there's still a lot up in the air. While the building goes up in the air, right?
Right. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions? So this is a public hearing. Any public comments, questions, concerns, thoughts? Okay, hearing none. I move, I move approval of the noise bylaw waiver request from Skanska USA Building, Inc. for Brookline High School expansion. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're being very efficient, Mr. Chair, so I don't know how you want to handle the rest.
Anything else we can?
No, there's nothing else. Everything is public hearings from here on out.
And this is an important public hearing. I guess everyone's here, but the public may be expecting. Want to take a 10-minute break? Okay. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back for the hearing.
All right, here we go. In business.
Hey, how are you? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's resume our meeting. Nancy Heller, are you still on the phone?
Pick up the phone, don't do it. It's a screening system. She's got a-
Scan.
Well, in the slipbook.
It's like a band. Playing it.
Opening the- Limited time.
Hey Nancy, we're ready to get started again. Good to go. Okay, great. Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Nancy still with us?
I am, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're waiting for Mr. Franco, Nancy.
Okay.
Okay, resuming the meeting of the Select Board. Next item, a grant of location. Question of approving the petition of Enstar Electric Company doing business as Eversource for permission to construct a location for Warren Street, a conduit running southeasterly and southwesterly from Boylston Street, a distance of about 135 feet to New Pole, to New Pole 9/57 approximately 15 feet northwest of existing Pole, JO 9/56, removing existing Pole ES 9/57 on the southwest corner of the intersection of Boylston Street and Warren Street. So poles have names, that's interesting. Anyway-
Names and numbers. Good evening, my name's Katie Flaherty and I'm representing Eversource tonight. And what Eversource would like to do is relocate that Pole 9 over 57 approximately 130 feet south on Warren Street and install approximately 135 feet of conduit to that newly relocated pole. And this is requested by the Town of Brookline and is needed to supply electric service to a gatehouse that's located on Warren Street.
The Fisher Hill Gate.
No, it's a reservoir. It's a reservoir.
Okay. Yeah, that's right, absolutely. Okay, that it? Any questions from the board initially?
I just want to remark that the gas leak investigation report indicates that there were no gas leaks found and that investigation was done onsite, I believe, and Mr. Ditto can confirm that, but onsite on December 3rd, 2019.
Okay, I wanted to ask Chief Sullivan to sort of brief the board on incidents that have happened in that area before we get into the public hearing piece. Commissioner, if you want to-
I'm just going to confirm, Select Board member Heller's assertion on the, on the gas investigation, it was conducted, the gas leak investigation was conducted on December 3rd, 2019. There were no leaks found at the site and that was conducted at that particular site. This project is being done at the request of the Department of Public Works to allow us to complete our reservoir renovation project, which has been ongoing for many months now. The last piece is to finish the landscaping work at the corner of Warren and Boylston. This pole is right smack in the middle of the area that we want to finish landscaping and in order to do that, we need Eversource to relocate the pole further up Warren Street. And to do that, they need to run the conduit from a manhole on Boylston at the corner. There's only a minimum amount of excavation required within Boylston Street. The bulk of it is along the sideline of Warren Street to the new pole and then, of course, install the new electric service to the gatehouse, which will allow for the completion of the renovations to the gatehouse. It's really important for us to get this project complete. We've been kind of delaying the grant now, grant of location since December and we're excited to get it finished.
Yeah, I noticed the dates here were estimated start date November to December. What are the updated dates?
This, well, as soon, if this grant of location is approved tonight, Eversource has informed us that they will expedite, subject to us issuing the permit, of course, and expedite the work right away. So we're anxious to get it done right away.
So this was the general location of an incident a couple of weeks ago. Could Chief Flaherty-
I'm sorry.
Chief Sullivan! I apologize.
No worries.
It's not even late. What's going on here?
Fire Chief John Sullivan. The, the location of the incidents several weeks back was further down Boylston Street, closer to Cypress. The investigation of that particular incident is still ongoing by both Eversource National Grid as well as the Massachusetts Department of Utilities. You, I believe, received my initial report on that. Really hasn't been much of an update, other than the Eversource folks have been continually monitoring the manholes that were involved at that time. They have found elevated levels of methane in those manholes at different periods, which ebbs and flows with every given day, but those levels are not specific to natural gas, they are methane, which could come from any number of sources. But the, the situation right now along that area is stabilized. They've taken care of any of the leaks that are considered to be grade one leaks that they have determined are in that location and they're ongoing monitoring everything in the area.
Any other questions?
When, when might we know more details?
About the specific incident?
Yeah.
The, the truth of the matter is, we may never know exactly what the root of everything was. We do know that the precipitating event was electrical, so the, the electrical short which occurred in the, in the manhole was an Eversource short. They believe that the, the larger of the explosions was as a result of the buildup of a gas within the manholes. That event will then displace the manhole covers, which will displace the gas, and you may never know. Gas is pretty transient, it's going to follow along the path of least resistance, it could end up in that manhole today and maybe not tomorrow. But they are ongoing monitoring all of those areas to make sure that there's, there's no further buildup of gas in those, those manholes as we go along.
So it sounds like this is a problem that could, that could occur anywhere in town. I mean, for example, methane is also a product of sewers.
It is.
And we have sewers all over. I mean, what type of assurance is there that does, would not be a future problem?
Well, I mean, there's no 100% guarantee of it, of that not happening again. The, the only thing that I can say is that the, the likelihood is low. With the proliferation of air in, in the, in the manholes, it would take a fairly substantial amount of gas to build up to get this kind of an explosion again. You know, I can't say with 100% surety that's going to not happen again, it certainly could, but there would need to be a precipitating event, and I want to make that clear, that without the short in the electrical line, there's no other event. It oftentimes will off-gas and go below the levels needed to create an explosion, so it, it's a confluence of things coming together in order to-
The perfect storm.
Create that issue, so.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the audience? Mr. Franco?
I guess I'll come back to a question about the, what does this practically mean to do this work? We're, we're talking about two fairly busy streets, so I know the commissioner said that there was a relatively small amount of work that was going to take place in the travel lanes on Warren Street and on Boylston Street, but what does that mean for traffic interruption? But what does that mean for traffic interruptions or rerouting or parking restrictions?
The work is fairly routine. We'll be accessing a EverSource manhole on Boylston Street in the first lane, eastbound. They will be trenching about 140 feet up the side of Warren Street, most probably in the edge of the roadway, to install two duct banks. To a location at the back corner of the property, further up Warren Street where the pole will be installed and then, of course, the conduit will run up the pole. The remainder of the work to feed the service to the building is within the property. There will be no disruption to traffic, there will be no disruption to access for residents. And it will be done during the daytime hours. So it's a fairly easy construction period.
And no service interruptions as well?
No service interruption, yes.
You may not be the right person to ask this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. When do we get our reservoir back?
Well, if you notice, the reservoir is coming back. It's already about two-thirds back. We had a lot of discussion about the best way to refill the reservoir. It was relatively easy to drain the water out of it, not so easy to get the water back in. We had conducted discussions with the MWRA about diverting water from the Chestnut Hill Reservoir over near Boston College because they drain that water down every year to control the vegetation on the bank. So we thought it would be great if they could divert that water from their reservoir that they're going to dump anyway and divert it into our reservoir to help us fill it faster.
Are there pipes from that reservoir?
Well, there's the old Cittituit Aqueduct that runs through there. The problem is, about 10 years ago, they severed the connection on the Cittituit Aqueduct and made it an emergency connection instead. So while we can get water from one reservoir to the other, it's through a very small connection and it would take too long. So we opted not to do that and to just allow it to refill naturally, which is what it's been doing now for the past, I'll say, six weeks or so. It's been refilling naturally. It's probably regained about two-thirds of its elevation already. And if the weather continues the way it's been continuing, we hope to be back at full elevation probably by early to mid-spring. Just a quick note on the saw gas. One of the best ways for you to minimize the escape of saw gas into electric manholes is for you to continue to fund our saw rehabilitation program. So as I leave soon, you know, you should continue to do that.
Okay, this is a public hearing, as I mentioned. Any public comment, questions? Yes, Ms. Van Soyes.
John Van Soyes, town meeting member from precinct 13. And homeowner who enjoys the view from his living room of a double pole, which has been there for about 20 years, even while the state has had a policy that utilities have to remove double poles. And if it's okay, I would just like to ask the representatives who are here tonight, how many double poles are there in Brookline and how many were removed in the past year?
I was actually expecting the EverSource to answer that question.
Everything comes down to public works. Everything. In all fairness to EverSource, most of the poles within the town of Brookline are owned by Verizon, not EverSource. There is a protocol when a pole gets hit to, in the order, the sequence of order that cables are transferred from the broken pole to the new pole. EverSource's work is generally done first because those are the primaries and they're the highest on the pole. The problem lies with other utilities such as cable or telephone themselves, it sometimes takes quite a bit longer. You're right, there is a time limit, I believe it's, I think, well, there is a state law that speaks to the time limit. The problem is, there's no way to enforce it. It's been one of my pet peeves over the last 10 years or so because there is a proliferation of double poles all over town. At the last count, we had in excess of 200 of them in various locations in town. And while sometimes we were successful in getting them to make a push, this is Verizon, there's a computer software program that we're all part of so that knows who's at bat in terms of getting the next set of wires removed off of the pole. Very frustrating process, one that really needs more attention. There's been legislation proposed at the state level to give municipalities more power and more teeth to enforce the removal of them, but so far it has not passed, unfortunately.
If I may say, just as a follow-up, that answer is an example of why Mr. Papsturgen has been such a valued public servant in Brookline. He was to the point, he was factual, and he didn't hesitate to answer the question. The question I have for the select board is, how long do we accept this runaround? When it's EverSource that's here, it's Verizon's responsibility. But Verizon comes before this board, I assume, many times a year in need of some kind of permit. Have we ever done anything to enforce on them the requirement that they remove the double poles? And have we ever done anything to require that the various entities that make use of these poles not use the excuse that it's the other entity that has to take responsibility for the double polling problem? They all have to take responsibility for the double polling problem. They all have utilities on the poles they have to coordinate. And the only way that they can be forced to coordinate is if this board holds their feet to the fire. And we're not getting it done. And it is unsightly and it is in disregard for the law. So I just state that for the record.
We'll take that under advisement and discuss with town staff what our options are.
Thank you.
At some point. Okay, any other comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I move approval. The petition of N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource for permission to construct a location for Warren Street as described earlier. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Verizon. You know what the question is. Public hearing, question of approving the petition by Boston University under their agreement with Verizon New England, Inc., requesting locations for two handholds on Lennox Street to pull fiber optic cables through the existing underground conduit that provides service to 10 Lennox Street. I guess, and you are?
Good evening, I'm Rachel Montozzi. I'm the project manager for Kaplan Construction Doing the Work.
Is Verizon here?
Verizon is not here and we're underground.
Okay, so we'll take up your question later, Ms. Van Soyes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, tell us what you're doing and what you want, or why we have to approve it.
Sure. This is an existing building at 10 Lennox Street being renovated and in addition for a daycare center for Boston University. Part of this project was to cut the teldata lines that run from an existing manhole in the street to where they were going into the building. The new service is going to be relocated to a different part of the building. So the service is already scheduled to be installed. The request is to add two handholds, which are small manholes, not full manholes. It's a rectangular box. And it would be to provide access at the point where the sweep from the conduit, from the manhole, that conduit would make a bend. That handhole would be placed at the bend at one spot and a bend at another spot because it would make a reverse Z, if you will. So it would be a handhole in the street for the underground service to access the bend points of the conduit. That Lennox Street is scheduled to be resurfaced as part of our project so there wouldn't be a patch. It would be installed in sequence when we're resurfacing the street. Thank you. Sure.
Any questions from the board?
I just had a question. You know, it's interesting and unusual for an institution like BU. Is that something, it's a longstanding agreement? You have like a delegation from Verizon or something?
Yeah. In 1991, Bell and Boston University signed an agreement to put the infrastructure in Lennox Street underground. And part of it was a shared manhole with a shared ownership. So BU provides the work and Verizon and BU own the manhole.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Well, just to say, since we've got a couple of minutes before our next hearing, I'll take the opportunity to say, I've got no problem with this particular request, just to take BU to task a little bit for the project itself, which is resulting in a childcare center, which certainly vice presidents and deans will be able to afford to send their kids. But the average BU employee, most BU employees will not be able to afford this childcare center. And I think that's really a problem. But I don't have any problem with your request today.
Convey that concern back to whoever.
Understood.
It's a problem that is not just a problem that BU has, but it's a problem we have throughout this community. And, you know.
I'd like to comment about the gas leak issue again. The investigation form, the investigation form indicates that it was done on December 7th and that there are no gas leaks in the project limits. So I'd like Mr. Ditto or Mr. Papsturgen to confirm that.
Commissioner Papsturgen, yes, that's correct. It was conducted in early December. There were no gas leaks found in the area of any grade. That's correct. And that has been certified by National Grid.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Any comments, questions from the audience? None? Okay, I move approval of the petition by Boston University under their agreement with Verizon New England, requesting locations for two handholds on Lennox Street to pull fiber optic cables through the existing underground conduit to provide service at 10 Lennox Street. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, finally. Public hearing for project eligibility application for 209 Harvard Street. This is a public hearing to review an application for site approval that was submitted by 209 Harvard Development LLC to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership in order to apply for a comprehensive permit in accordance with Chapter 40B. Yes, introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening. My name is Cameron Merrill from Merrill &amp; McGee. And I appreciate the opportunity to be before this board. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I represent 209 Harvard Development LLC. Present in the audience, Michael Giuliano and Chris Jacoi. Also present is the project architect, Jim Batchelor from Arrow Street, as well as our 40B consultant, also counsel, Elena Quirk, with the law offices of Peter Freeman. Peter Freeman will also be involved in this project. Not present is our traffic engineer, Scott Thornton from Van Assen Associates. As well, we are financing this project through Massachusetts Housing Partnership. You're probably aware of this location, 209 Harvard. It is in a transit overlay district, includes corner. Obviously, there's several projects on the other side of Beacon. This is on the Washington, the Village side of Beacon. In total, there will be 44 units of residential housing which is proposed. Of those, 35 units will be micro unit, studio units. We envision that those units will likely be ideal for younger professionals, elderly residents, most likely less families than those units. However, there will be other three-bedroom units, which we'll discuss shortly. 11 of the units will be at 80% of the AMI. However, it's our goal that the entire package of housing, primarily due to the size of the micro units, will be generally more affordable to the general public than the traditional luxury condo, which we've seen so much of in Brookline and surrounding communities. There will be a parking attendant onsite as necessary as there currently is for the location. The building is well-known in Brookline, but I'll give you a little bit of history while we can. So right now, it's medical office, dentists, of the like, a lot of people in Brookline are serviced by this building. And it's the goal to maintain those services in this building to continue to support the community. As I said, this is a transit overlay district. It's right on the bus line, easily walk into the C line as well. The building in front will maintain its location and won't be torn down. However, this project will provide an opportunity to do a drastically needed overhaul of that building. We've commenced that already, earning special permits from the zoning board of appeals, allowing for solar panels to be installed on the roof. That effort will be continued as a phase of this project, not necessarily tied to this project, but as a phase. And this project will allow that to continue. A major focus of this project, as Jim Batchelor will inform you, is going to be sustainability and smart architecture, which will allow greater accessibility for the community and access of this site for people who want to use the transit. Also, in addition to the facade upgrades, one of the major goals that we have here is to possibly activate the ground floor retail space, which is currently not existing. It's a void in the building, if you will. By doing so, we'd be able to create a cafe space, a smaller local retail space, which would better serve the community, add some ground space activation, which has been desired by business and residential community in that area.
Could you speak more, could you look at the development data?
Sure.
And by the way, that ground floor retail space, does that intrude into the parking lot under the building?
Yes, if that does occur, two spaces would be removed from the project. It would be a smaller location, non-visioning, drills or anything along those lines. It would be a smaller amenity, if you will. But generally speaking, and Jim can go into the details, the rear of this building is a subsurface paved parking lot. One of the least efficient uses of space in an environment like Coolidge Corner. It is a perfect opportunity for housing of this nature that will benefit the community, obviously for the obvious reasons, providing affordable housing stock, but also creating an opportunity for residents who don't necessarily fit the traditional mold of the luxury two-bedroom, luxury three-bedroom, the oversized one-bedroom with two parking spaces, et cetera. So this will be a diverse housing opportunity for Brookline and we're excited to share it with you and proceed with the permitting process. That being said, quickly, the unit mix, which we're envisioning, 44 total.
Can we go back to the previous slide? So you say no fossil fuel hookups. Is it, is it there currently fossil fuel hookups to the medical office building? Or are you talking about just new fossil fuels?
It's an interesting point. My name's Jim Batchelor, the architect. Farsighted or for other reasons, that building was built with all-electric heat.
Really?
All-electric heat.
Never would have guessed that.
It's actually one of the reasons that a variance was issued for this site many, many years ago to do a development on the rear end, which was ultimately never constructed. But they ultimately determined that the heating of that nature back then, many decades ago, was too expensive to allow this building to thrive on its own. And has caused, one of the reasons has caused the new owners to explore other potential ideas and to make full use of this site. And we think that the 40B project is the best option for that at this time. So that being said, the unit mix, 44 total units, 36 of them would be the studio, micro unit variety, three two-bedrooms and five three-bedrooms. variety, three two-bedrooms and five three-bedrooms of that mix. Nine of the studios would be part of that 80% AMI, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom unit. And now we'll pass it over to Jim Bachelor to describe the project.
Members of the select board, I'm Jim Bachelor. I'm with the architectural firm Arrow Street. I am also a town resident on Manchester Road. The slide that's on the wall now, which for Nancy's benefit is number six, shows the building 209 Harvard with a red marker on it right in the center. You're looking pretty much at the back of the building and on the left, the south side. This building is three and a half blocks from Coolidge Corner, which you can see in the background, and Beacon Street. The back of this site is very underutilized, and probably some of you have been there. It's not a very pleasant place, and we feel that there is a higher and better use for it than as a parking lot. We've looked at what's possible and have proposed something which we hope will be well-received. It's housing. This is an overview slide, Slide 7, and in the upper left-hand corner is an aerial view which shows the existing 209 Harvard in the front and the additional housing added in the back. It's about the same height, it's one story taller. On top of the existing building, you can see black squares that represent the photovoltaic cells which the owners have put on the building. The owners have a real commitment to the sustainability, and we've talked about ways in which that can be continued in the site, both within the medical office building. Pardon me?
Those are current panels?
Those are currently panels on the roof. On the right-hand side at the top is a drawing which shows the front of the building. This is, the front of the building is something which the ownership also hopes to upgrade, possibly including a cafe on the ground floor on the right-hand side. In other words, right, right in that area there, the space behind that wall is parking, and we would remove a couple of parking spaces. We would have enough space for a small cafe. And I think all concerned think that would be a great addition to the streetscape there. There may be some other improvements to that facade as part of that, because I think the owners realize there might be more friendly approaches to architecture that could be considered. So that's down the road, but it's part of the hope. And on the right-hand side of the slide, you can see the entry. There's a pathway between this building and the one to its right, which is about eight or 10 feet wide, and which we think can be kind of a walk to an entry, which is the lower-left slide. So you would come back into the area about halfway back. This is pretty much at the back of the medical office building. We would have a little bit of a courtyard. This is the south side, so it would get sun, which would be nice, and would be a landscaped area where you could then go directly into the residential building. If you come by car, obviously you would drive and park below. We have worked very closely with this neighbor here. That's an apartment building. It's the same building shows on this slide here. They've been supportive, and the owners have been talking with them about a joint approach to the landscaping, so that the landscaping between the new building and the existing building would both be improved as part of that project. And lower right-hand corner is a picture of the architecture from the back corner. And in general, we are looking to avoid sort of the monolithic form of the current building. We've got some angled bay windows and balconies, which we think will give it a good residential feel, give it some scale. At the top, there's a setback for a terrace and some amenity space. These are some plans. They're very hard to see, but I'll just say essentially what's going on here. In the upper right is a landscape plan. We will be landscaping the edges, which are now the edges of a parking lot and relatively unpleasant to walk around or even to leave your car beside. So that will all be up at the grade of Harvard Street and the grade of the abutters, so I think that will be a much more pleasant, continuous landscape. And this abutter here is the apartment building with whom we've been working on improvements that would benefit both parties. The upper left-hand slide shows a typical parking level. For those of you who have been in the building, you know that Harvard Street, which is on this side, there's a driveway that you come in, and then you very quickly make a right-hand turn into the building. That gets you to the top level of two levels of parking. It's essentially at the grade of Harvard Street. If you continue down the ramp today, you come into the open area. Our proposed arrangement would keep the entry that's here for the upper level, the top level of parking, which would be an expansion of this level to the right, and then when you come down here, you would go a little deeper, but that would allow you to have a full second level of parking, which would again be at the level of the existing lower-level parking, if you know the building. Drawings on the right give you some sense of where we're headed in terms of the units. We are looking for a good, small place to live. The number of square feet obviously importantly relates to the cost of construction, therefore the rent, and this is a microunit, also called a studio unit, depending on how you feel about micro versus studio. Some people feel studio is a preferred term. This is an early stage for the units, because we will be putting more thought into them. But right now, what we're looking at is a living area on the outside with a balcony to the exterior. So even though they're relatively small, you get some outdoor space in it.
And no windows in the bedroom in other areas?
I'll go back. So there's a choice. These units are narrow compared to like a one- or two-bedroom unit. And there are two choices basically for how to organize a studio microunit. This is the door to the hall. You can come in, as this shows, to an area where you can have a bed that doesn't have a window. You can have the bathroom dividing the two spaces, or you can pull the bathroom back against the corridor, and you can have the bedroom area closer to the living room. There are pros and cons to both. We haven't really made up our mind. Both such units are out in the world. This is a section through the site, the building. This is Harvard Street. On the other side is Miller Parish Church. This portion here is the existing medical office building. This portion here is the housing, and you get a sense for the parking, which actually continues from the limit of the old back here on the lower level and from the limit of the old back here on the level that is at grade. Next view is sliced the other way, so that in this case, this is 12 Alton Place. Alton Place is over here. Sterns Road is on this side here, and you can see there are two parking levels above them, or five levels of the units. And this is the area that will be landscaped with the adjacent neighbor. We have a couple more views that we've just started. This view is created by using, you know, Google Maps? This is very similar. It's called Google Earth, but it's 3D. It's something that's publicly accessible through Google, and with the right skills, you can take an architectural model of the building and you can insert it into the 3D world that is Google Earth. So it's nice. It's not perfect. There are details at the grade that are just very simplified here, but it gives you a sense for how things sit in. And now we're conscious that the relationship with the abutters is important. There's a substantial tree along this edge, which we are looking at saving, and in general, we feel that this is working out pretty comfortable, given that it's, it is fairly dense. It's an area which we think can take it in terms of the uses, and we think the scale and the way we've treated the building kind of breaks down the massing. This is the roof terrace area here, the units, some balconies, and then in front is the medical office building. This last slide is just a view kind of from the other side of Harvard Street. This is Harvard Street, the frontage. Here is the area where the cafe maybe hopefully will be, in the front of the building, which maybe hopefully will be further worked on, and back behind the residential building. So that's a general description. Happy to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Ms. Hamilton?
I didn't really see anything about how many parking spaces.
So there is, in the 40B application, there is a paragraph that addresses that, and I will summarize that here. At the present time, there are effectively about 63 spaces on the lot.
On site right now?
Yes.
Wow.
And we feel that if we do the cafe, we will have two less, so we want to plan for that. That would mean that there would be 61 spaces total. The key that makes this viable is that a lot of the people who park there are not users of the building. In other words, through various arrangements, which the town, I think, is party to or aware of, it's been permitted to rent parking spaces out. So some of that goes to people there for daytime, some of that goes for people at night. In general, I would say during the day, things are pretty full. At night, you know, there's, there's no problem. During the day, the owner also has a valet service, so it's attendant parking, and that actually provides an additional capacity. In other words, you can get more than 61 cars when you approach it from a valet point of view. So we do think that there's adequate parking for the tenants who, who need parking, and that there will be adequate parking for the housing. We did an estimate and came up with a number of units for the housing, and I think it was, worked out to about 80% of the number of units. In other words, if there are 44 units, 80% of that was 30-something, 36? We felt that we had 36 spaces that we could dedicate to residents. We do feel with the type of units that we've got, that a lot of people can live here without a car. Obviously, some people will want and will need a car, but I think this is a good future for us as a general society, if we can get by with a few fewer parking spaces and a little bit more reliance on that. And I think it's, it's quite, you know, quite a reasonable proposal in this particular situation. There will definitely be more analysis of this presented as we go forward.
So you said you're saving the parking spaces for the tenants of the existing building. What about the non-tenants who rent in that, in that building?
In other words, the people who are using the building?
People who can't walk on the street overnight and, you know, rely on that building for their parking.
I, I can say very generally that there's turnover, and that's, that helps. In other words, it's not like there's certain people who have been counting on those parking spaces for a long time, as I understand it. And I think I would recommend, if he's game, if Chris Chakoi, one of the owners who's more involved with the management, could address that if you'd like a little deeper assessment of it. I don't know why you want to say anymore, Chris.
I can speak to it a moment. We have...
Come to the microphone.
I can say that we have, as Jim mentioned, a very transient population of people that are using the parking on an overnight basis. I would, I would say that of the, I drove by on the way here tonight. I think there were maybe 10 or 15 cars in the lot, and of those 10 or 15 cars that are in the lot that are non-residents or non-tenants of the existing building, I would say perhaps three or four have been using it for more than two years, and maybe even less than that. So it's, the lot is available to the neighborhood as space allows, and that would continue to be the case as long as the select board grants us the appropriate licensing that we have at the moment for that. I mean, as Jim said, our, this will evolve, it will depend on how many folks who are residents of the building that have cars and want to use the lot, how many of the existing tenants of the medical office building want to use the lot. It's really a very evolving kind of a, kind of a thing. As Jim mentioned, we do have a requirement actually from the town of Brookline that we have an attendant on the lot. So that's something that's always been there and will continue to be there, and I think that gives us some flexibility as well to be able to accommodate people, for instance, who are coming to see a doctor who, in the building, who may have, be disabled, or there's some spaces there now that are dedicated for drop-off and pickup for patients and so forth. So...
Yeah. My only concern is not to take away from the residents in that community the opportunity to use that space for parking. If they don't have that space, they're going to park elsewhere, and, you know, and they'll park in heat islands that are all around. This at least is underground, not, you know, underground, and, you know, it doesn't have that heat island effect that other parking lots in that community do. My only thought.
Well, we'll certainly keep that in mind, and like I said, we're happy to continue to make any spaces that are available, available, and by having the attendant there, we do have some flexibility in that regard. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Sure. Yeah, I think this is an improvement upon the, sort of what you mentioned before, that sort of circus lot being there, that heat island there, but, but there's no, in what you showed here, there's no real open, usable, usable open space in this. And looking at sort of the area there, that's something that, that would be a great benefit to the community, or where there isn't really enough there. Is there any possibility of working that into the plans here?
It's a pretty tight site. I mean, I don't want to overstate what could be done. We're aware of that quality, that desire. We put an emphasis on creating some roof and private balcony open space. We are trying to make the open space that's at the edge as usable as we can, and we think that the area in front of the entry, as well as we can do the cafe, we can make the front of the building more open space friendly. It's not the kind of open space that allows you to run around.
I'd be curious to see what you do at the roof.
Yeah, indeed.
Any other questions from the board?
I would like to know if the developer provided notice to those people who currently, current residents in the area who currently park there, they must have their, any information, certainly their billing information. I'd like to know if they provided notice to those people of this hearing.
I don't believe they're providing notice to this hearing specifically, but they will certainly be involved in the process as we move forward.
So I would suggest you identify those non-tenant parking users and make sure that they are aware of what's going on.
Certainly. Well, I should say though, that by the special permit, the proximity at which they have to live is generally close. I need to check the exact square footage, but it is in close proximity to this site.
As a courtesy, I would suggest.
We will certainly do that as well.
So this is a public hearing. Any questions, comments, concerns from the audience? Yes. Come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and state your statement.
Hello? Hi. My name is Michael Zurob. I live at 45 Longwood Avenue, about 500 feet from this proposal, about a three-minute walk, in precinct three. It's my first time talking... It's my first time talking at this kind of thing, and I'm excited that I get to use it as an opportunity to state my enthusiastic support for a 40B project, which I feel like you probably don't get a ton of. In some ways, I'm sort of a really good candidate for talking about this, because I live in a microunit or a studio in Coolidge Corner. I live in a building that's much taller than this one, at forty-five Longwood Avenue. It's about ten stories with a hundred units. By comparison, this thing's pretty tame. There's a lot of buildings that are a whole lot taller in this area, but I think that this proposal really kind of brings what is a underutilized space kind of into the context of the neighborhood. There's not a whole lot of just vacant surface lots in Coolidge Corner. There are a lot of apartment buildings, and I think that this is like a really good opportunity to build, to bring housing where we really need it. Housing is not affordable in Brookline, generally speaking. The objection is always, well, we're full. It turns out we're not. We have surface lots like these that we can build upon. Yeah, I live in a studio, I don't have a car, I take the bus, sometimes I take the green line. I think there's a lot of folks like me who would like to live in Brookline but can't afford to, and this is one pretty benign, tame way to do that. I walked by this lot on the way here, seventy-five percent of the spaces, I would say, were vacant. This isn't, you know, of the surface lot where this building's to be built, so there's not a whole lot there. I think housing is a really important need, and this seems like a good place to add it. So that's what I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi. I'm a new homeowner and a first-time speaker here. My name is Stephen Ehrenberg. I'm on twenty-five Sterns, so I'm right behind this project. I also just wanted to express my thanks for presenting about this project and my enthusiasm for 40B projects as well. I just wanted to encourage the group that presented to continue to communicate with the residents around the project, not just abutting the project, because, sorry for my first comment to be so nimbyish, but I know a lot of us in that community, there are a lot of people like me who work out of our homes and who are going to be curious about the impact on, for instance, the light. There's not a lot that comes into the apartments on Sterns Road, and this, for instance, will certainly block some of the light that comes into our apartment. We acknowledge and accept it, and we're certainly going to be concerned about the noise of construction, and there's a lot of elderly people who live on the block as well, and I'm going to, I'm here in part to communicate that to them, what has been communicated here tonight. So, and some of the people in my building do park in those spots during the daytime and then go find something to park overnight.
Please talk into the microphone.
I'm sorry, and then park overnight and then get up early in the morning to move their cars. So this is a routine that many people have established and feel a lot of nervousness about, so I just want to urge you to be good-faith neighbors and to communicate frequently and in good faith with us as neighbors. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes?
Hi. My name is Erin Bennett, and I am representing Seventeen Sterns Road. I'm representing myself, but representing, I live at Seventeen Sterns Road. First, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to review the project and make public comments on it, and I think that's important. I also appreciate the efforts that you guys are all looking at with around affordable housing. I think that is important as well, as well as the efforts to make green buildings. As a direct, I mean, this project will directly impact us as we're behind it, will be impacted by the shadow cast as well as the loss of sky view from this new building. For example, the cutouts between the buildings, between like seventeen and fifteen and fifteen and thirteen, we get limited light in the back rooms already, and in the winter, when the sun gets lower, we'll receive no direct sunlight during the day, it'll all be indirect sunlight. We also have, we're old buildings, they're a hundred and five years old, built in nineteen fifteen, and the, some of the rear-facing bedrooms are passively heated during the day by sunlight. I mean, they have radiators in them, but the majority of the heat, like during the day, does come from sunlight, and so the, this will, the shadow and the loss of just the light in general will increase our costs, our heating costs. We also, the driveway, we are reliant on sunlight for snow melt. It's a very tight space back there. We have no ability to plow very well. There is one parking space, which is our building owns, that we put the extra snow in, and it does take a long time to melt, so that would be another consideration that we would want to have addressed is, or I don't know if you can address it, but it is a concern of ours about what will happen in the parking lot. If there is not enough sunlight to melt the snow, it will get icier, it will get more dangerous for people walking around it. So as a resident as well, I share similar concerns to you around the process during construction. It's a very noisy, contained space, as it is, and there are a lot of people there who work from home. I know that's a temporary time period when, during construction, but it will increase noise and the ability for people to do the work at home during that time period. So those were the primary comments. Thank you again.
Thank you. Yes. While she's coming up, that's a very tight space. How do you stage construction in that area? I'm not even sure how you can get trucks through that narrow passageway between the building and the apartment building next to it.
Very carefully. We've had two contractors look at it. We think that it's possible, but we realize--
Yeah. It'd be difficult, I mean--
It's not--
But can you do it without, I don't know, without being a very big nuisance to the adjacent buildings? And maybe that's, maybe that's the question you can't answer, but it's a question that I think people have.
But it is a question we can talk through with the contractors and address.
Okay. Yes. Name.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Andrea Ricotta. I'm here initially representing the trustees of Beechtree Place. I have some fellow owners here with me. We actually live at twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-eight Alton Place, which directly is behind the proposed building, and we're here to share some very serious concerns we have about this building project. One, which has been brought up, you know, we recognize that in the short term, there's, you know, definitely going to be noise generated by the construction of this project. You can already tell it's a very dense area back there, and this is a building that's sort of not being put on the street, but it's being built behind a building in between other buildings, so there's going to be, you know, some extreme disruption and noise during construction. But we're also concerned, which has also been brought up, around the light that's going to impact the owners, particularly of twenty-four Alton Place. I am an owner at twenty-four Alton Place. Very concerned about putting a building right in the middle of where the western sunlight comes in to where many people own and live. You know, also concerned, you know, I heard the comment that, you know, back there in the parking lot, this is, it's not a very pleasant place, and hearing that comment was concerning to me, because that's where I live. I live right behind that parking lot and actually think building a building in that space will really disrupt the quaintness of the neighborhood and the area that is behind us. We know Coolidge Corner is a really dense place, and to add to that, don't feel like, you know, would necessarily be a huge value add to the area. There's definitely a neighborhood feel to the Alton Place-Sterns neighborhood and feel that this building would disrupt that. You know, we are also concerned about, you know, the microunit design, you know, wondering if these would be types of units that would be available for Airbnb or for short-term rentals and sort of the transient nature of people coming and going in this building. Again, it's a very busy place, and having people sort of continuously move in and move out of these units could be really disruptive to the people who live in and around that surrounding area. Also concerned about the noise level that this building could bring. I mean, we recognize that having outdoor balconies is, you know, appealing to people who might live there, but again, this is a tight, enclosed space, so any noise that's coming outside is going to impact the people that live in and around that area, which is pretty quiet right now back there, which is a huge benefit to the residents that live in and around this area. And another, you know, major concern is we really haven't been, you know, brought into any of the planning. We haven't been engaged in any way thus far in the project, and we're certainly directly going to be impacted by this building project, so the fact that we haven't been brought in at this point makes us concerned that we may not be brought in in the future. So at that, you know, I just want to state that the owners who live directly behind this lot in twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight are very opposed to this building project for a number of reasons, but really, you know, this neighborhood is so dense, do we need to continue to add and build where there's, you know, a tiny sliver of space, you know, for the current residents here in Brookline? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kanesh Sharma. I'm also a fellow owner and trustee at Beechtree Place, I live in twenty-six. I just wanted to add a couple things to what Andrea mentioned. In addition to everything, I think what I really want to stress on was traffic. Traffic in that neighborhood, if you're driving around there in the mornings or in the evenings during rush hour, is terrible as it is. From what the images show, the driveways, I'm not sure if they accommodate for two-way traffic, so there will be, if there are people going in and out of those driveways, that will cause a backup on Harvard Street, which is going to be a further nuisance. I also wanted to stress on the impact of these additional units on the surrounding infrastructure. So if you've ever, if you ever go to one of the local grocery stores or the gas station or anywhere around there where locals need to sort of do their shopping and whatnot, it's on a Sunday evening, Saturday evening, absolutely miserable, so I just wanted to ask if the owners of the building and the project have thought about that and how they would account for the impact on the local infrastructure. And then finally, I just wanted to just add, as an owner in twenty-six Alton, and the reason why we moved here was because of the family feel. I don't know what kind of accommodations the building will have for the elderly, as was mentioned, and we are certainly concerned about, you know, there's nothing wrong with the younger population, but we're certainly concerned about the different lifestyles that they would bring into that neighborhood that would also impact the many families that live in and around there. So these are some of the other points that are of extreme concern for us, especially since we are absolutely adjoining the lot where it is today. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Fernandez, do you have a comment?
Sure. I just wanted to ask if, there were two things that I heard that I'd like to address. One is the concern about community engagement and engagement of the abutters and how that'll work going forward, and the other was the issue with, I think it was a good question about cars going in and out. Is there enough, it doesn't seem that there's enough room for cars to go in and out at the same time, but maybe I'm wrong. You can respond to this.
So as to community engagement, this planning process actually started a couple years ago, and at that time, about three hundred, and then a subsequent volley of four hundred letters were sent out to immediate abutters. Certainly, those homes were mailed letters for an earlier iteration. As it relates to the 40B project, as we are in the Pell phase, aside from this meeting, there has not been public or abutters meetings, private meetings. It was our plan that once we hear back as to the likelihood or allowance from MHP as for the eligibility of this site, there would be a wholesale engagement individually with every single unit owner. Some of the property managers have already been contacted, so the unit will certainly be brought in and involved in this process. And I'll defer to Jim on the driveway.
So the driveway is basically planned as a two-way drive. There's twenty feet and two work.
Gina Farley, town meeting member from sixteen. May I suggest that all the town meeting members and nearby, both in precinct seven and maybe across the street in ten, be informed and invited to meetings?
I think there's only three precincts that we have to work, so yeah.
Okay. It's very important to be engaged. It can mitigate all kinds of opposition. I wonder too, since you, this is the beginning of the official process, I guess, with site approval, I believe, is what they're looking for. It sounds like you haven't got your money yet from the various agencies. Is that true? Have you got your money yet? The three funding agencies for 40B, do you have that yet? No? So my suggestion is that there be some kind of neighborhood discussion with the concerns I heard tonight, prior to, certainly prior to granting the 40B, but maybe even the site, I'm not sure, of reducing the size of it. And maybe, it has to be within the pro forma, they have to make their money. At the same time, it's not always initial is a wish list and it's in excess of the profitability. So maybe they can reduce it, maybe the neighborhood could sit down with them and talk about reductions and mitigations of the shadow. I know how you feel about that. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, observations, concerns? Yes, Ms. Hamilton.
So I actually used to use one of the Zip Cars that was on-site in the parking garage, so I too have experienced that there aren't that many cars parked there, at least in off-peak times. I would encourage, I don't think that there are Zip Cars on-site right now, but get-around Zip Car might be a good way to kind of allow people who have cars, you know, there. Maybe they can get rid of their vehicle and rely on car share, which leads me to two other points. One is, is there a pull-off? Could you try to design a pull-off for either the Ubers that I'm sure will visit the site as well as delivery vehicles? What's the current plan for those?
We recognize that needs to be part of the discussion. We have not, at this point, tried to set up a drop-off area for either Uber or packages, but understand the value of that. Thank you.
So let me build on select person Hamilton's point about sustainability and transportation. You rely heavily on the fact that this is in the transit overlay district, so I'd love to see some details about not only Zip Cars being included, but also EV spaces, Blue Bike, sponsorship in the general area, and other transportation alternatives, bike accommodations, bike racks, bike rooms. I fully endorse the completion of a shadow study, so we have a sense of where light is going to be diverted or prevented from coming into abutting properties. Curious about the service entrance and how trash, for example, is going to be collected, what the vision for that is. Where's the truck going to pull into? When there's somebody moving in or moving out, where is that moving truck envisioned to park? And how are we going to get belongings from the truck into the building and the reverse? I'll pause there and let you respond, since I'm stacking up questions here.
Ma'am, you recognize the importance of all those questions, and I think that we don't, at this stage, have answers to all of them. We have starts. We do, even in our preliminary plans, have two areas for trash, and we understand the importance of keeping the place, you know, pleasant to walk around inside and out. We do have, as well, a bike room, so we are expecting that we will encourage the use of bikes, and we'll have thought through, you know, what's a good location and how are things secure in a way that people will feel comfortable leaving their bikes there. So I think we are definitely tracking those issues, but I think they all need, they all need more continuous updating.
Let me do two other things. One, I note on slide six that passageway between two oh nine and two oh one, which I think is going to be the path to this building behind--
So I think we are definitely tracking those issues, but I think they all need, they all need more continuous updating.
Let me do two other things. One, I note on Slide Six that passageway between 209 and 201, which I think is going to be the path to this building behind. I saw, I did not see on the slide any lighting accommodations, any stanchions or anything like that. So both because of the tightness of this neighborhood and for safety reasons, I'd be curious to know how we're going to have appropriate illumination that's not disruptive to abutters.
We are definitely thinking of that as part of this. We would like this to be a very pleasant walk. Some of the early thoughts have been consideration of maybe some trellis-like elements, and lighting could be integrated in that, but we want it safe and well-lit in that point of view, but also well-lit in the pleasant point of view. Because sometimes you can get tons of light when it feels like the cleat lights are on. You don't want that. You want a nice walkway, and that's our goal.
Pedestrian-scale lighting is sort of the buzzword in Brookline recently, so that's on my mind. I fully endorse the reimagining of that front space of 209. It's always been one of my pet peeves that the streetscape there doesn't really make sense. So anything we can do to make it a more inviting streetscape and have some more continuity should go down that block, I think would be welcome to me. And there's a whole bunch of tools in the toolbox, landscaping, materiality, seating perhaps. And I'll conclude where I started with sustainability points. I think there's an interesting opportunity here to use some permeable pavement as we think about reimagining this space and with a focus on sustainability to think about innovative ways to handle water and put our sort of hydrology cap on, so.
Definitely agree, and I think the owners are committed to this way of thinking, as is the design team. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, we will take all these comments into consideration, work with Ms. Steinfeld in terms of putting together, you know, comments, correct? Putting together our comments for the subsidizing agency, and you go from there. Thank you.
I'll just say that this is the first step in a long process. We're going to send a letter to the subsidizing agency with our thoughts and our requests. But I would urge everybody who spoke tonight to stay involved. The next step in the process, maybe even the most important step, is the hearings before the zoning board of appeals. And that's where the conversation takes place about reductions in scale or materials or lighting. So that will be well-noticed, it'll be prominently displayed on the project's sort of space on the town website. But it's really important, if you've got thoughts about this project, that you stay involved and attend the zoning board of appeals hearings, because they're the ones that sort of had that, or empowered to have that conversation about what does the final project look like. And Ms. Steinfeld can correct me if I've misspoke on any points there.
No, absolutely not. Allison Steinfeld, planning director. I did want to explain that there is a website available with a specific website just for this project on the town website. If you want to submit comments to the board, to the select board, to be incorporated into their response to the state, please put them in writing and send them to me. I'm the planning director. I will share them with the board and with the state subsidizing agency. Thank you.
Okay, I'd also add that although the 40B process does restrict to some degree what the town can do in terms of controls over what goes up, I would urge you to keep in mind some of the comments from tonight and address them in your planning going forward so that that process can be eased and so that, you know, going forward, you know, you have a good relationship with the people around the project. And I'll also add, I think it's important to emphasize again that, you know, this location is where we need density, where we need density because of the access to the green line going into downtown, number 66 bus going to, from Dudley Station to Harvard. I mean, that is where, you know, we can really provide opportunities for people with minimum impact on traffic from cars and vehicles, so. Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay. So, thank you. What do we need to do? That's it, nothing. We don't have to approve anything. Thanks, everyone, for comments and for coming out this evening.